Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's too sobering and y'all loosen up. It's a great day. You woke up this morning and you got an opportunity. Thank you all so much for being here. As we all know, this is the first meeting of this month. And also the thanks to the last week of the year. So we're grateful for the thanks to the great opportunity and it's true to thank God. So with that being said, I am calling you to order at this time. And at this time, I'd like to call on Reverend Dr. Clementine Warren to lead us with the implication that we can stand and remain standing. And Councilwoman Florence will lead us with the pledge.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning. Each other, God, as we come upon this morning, we pray to you, we thank you. We thank you, God, for such a beautiful day on today. We thank you, Lord, that you have blessed us to stay here for Thanksgiving and be with our families and our friends. Not Father God, in the name of Jesus, we come together on this morning. We lift up our city before you, we lift up our city officials, oh God. We pray right now in the name of Jesus for your wisdom, your knowledge, and your understanding. Your let each one reach one. And as we embark upon the Christmas season, help us to remember those that are less fortunate, God. And let us do it to some say, Lord, reach out and church someone to make this world a better place. For this nation, this community, our neighborhoods, and surroundings is, is we asking Jesus name. Amen.
Amen. Attention, Luke pledge. Our current allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Thank you to the republic for what is its stand, one nation under God. In beautiful, 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 peaceful, peaceful.
Thank you Reverend Warren and thank you Councilmember Florence for the pledge. We surely appreciate you all. At this time, council, I would like to have a formal privilege to have Mr. Tom Ware to come and speak. And he needs to speak as reference to the tree commission. Because we do know that there are some people that we need to look at appointing. So he's going to tell us more about the tree commission. Mr. Ware.
Hi, how are you?
All right.
I'm coming to work on the tree commission. And right now with the tree commission, I think we're trying to, I think they were saying that we had something. I have an application we did not do. And come to town now, we did do the application for the funding. So we're trying to get that settled now about something about the application. I think because, um, this Jennifer, she did find that what we didn't submit this application for some funding. But they're saying that we did not submit an application for funding.
You talking about the appropriation?
Yes.
When did you all give an answer?
Jennifer got in, she did go back and check. She said she did find it where she didn't submit it. But they said they have no record of that.
What date was that, do you know?
Jennifer, Jennifer, she did tell me that my notes are home. Right, I did work it out, what date was that? But we do have.
Okay, because there is a timeframe.
Right, because we did, we did a deadline. We did with the deadline. They said they didn't have no records of it. But she went back and checked that once she did submit before the deadline.
Okay, well, you know, of course, this year is about the end and we know the timeframe coming up for the next year. So I guess that'll be looked into as far as last year. But you know, with this year being closing out, so make sure you all redo it again. And you know, I'm not saying one that you all, or saying that you all submitted is not going to be looked at. But again, with the beginning of the year coming, we do know the ramping up for next year. And you know, the deadline is May 1st, I think. So I guess it'll be looked at and found out and see. How often are you all meeting? Because again, this, you know, what we've heard, you all correctly, Councilman Warren, because we have the, it's a one or two person we need to appoint, Mrs. Davis. Two. Yeah, so we need to do this before December 8th, Council. And but are you all still meeting on often or a regular basis? And I know Jennifer is a part of it.
Jennifer and I and Ms. Brinkin, we meet amongst ourselves. Because we really can't get nobody else to meet at. So it's just the three of us that really want all the meetings, you know, communicating a lot.
Okay, so but at this point, the issue is the funding that you all send in the application. Okay, so I guess we'll have to check with finance, Mr. Warren, and see. But again, I do want to reiterate that, you know, this year is coming to the end. And to reiterate that you all getting in before May 1st. Okay?
And how many we have on that tree commission?
Well, we're down to two people right now.
Down to two right now. So is that five? Yeah. Three, two down, five left.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ware. I appreciate you coming and hope we didn't take a waste of time, but we appreciate you being here. Okay, proceeding on, Council at this time, one of the biggest highlights, as I always talk about. And I always say, Reverend, we say, and I continue to say, because it's true, the greatest two words you could say, sincerely is thank you. So we want to call upon our patron, Reverend Seth, and Chad Stane, as well as our City Manager, Mr. Wallace Warren, to thank our people in increments of five years from their service, work, dedication, and service to City and to me. This is Chad Stane.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
So this is our last one of these for this year. This year's called by, it's hardly been wrapped enough, 2025. So these are the service anniversaries and five-year increments that we have for the month of December. With our fire department, we have Sergeant Dustin Kilpatrick, five years of service.
You want to say some words? Thank you so much. Hey, give at least twenty more now. All right, great for the time.
Also, with our fire department, we have Sergeant Lawrence Melvin, with five years of service.
Words? Hey, listen, at least, hey, at least one who we hear for you for time, at least. All right.
And also with our fire department, Sergeant Eric Johnson, with five years of service.
Good job.
Words? All the time, I thank you, the Council, and what you trade about, and serve on.
Twenty more now. All right.
I want to have one more that you wouldn't be here this morning. Mike Motley with our Shaw and Hope at Work, 25 years of service. So we get our thanks and appreciate you.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Thank you all. And the ones that are here, I know I always encourage them because of the retirement system that stayed out of my ass. In my opinion, it's one of the best in the union. And so we always try to encourage our people to do at least 25 years. So that's why you always care to say, you know, get at least 25 years because your retirement system is great. And of course, we want everybody to continue to have the quality of life, which is our responsibility. So thank you all so much. And Council, at this time, we proceed on. Under the City Clerk, Council, I'd like to ask for a motion for the approval of the November 17th working session, as well as November 18th, the council meetings. Since we were all present at that time, I'd like to ask for a motion and we take a vote altogether once.
Motion approved.
All right, now a motion from Councilman Dave, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Florence. All right, Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Dave.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Florence.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any time, at this time of the year, it's business of discussion. Now, we would proceed with resolutions and on administration. We have a resolution in reference to add an additional half-day, four hours on December 26, 2025, to be observed in 2025 Christmas holidays. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas December 24, fourth, 2025, and December 25, 2025, are designated as the official Christmas holidays for 2025 for employees of the City of Phoenix City. And whereas to allow additional time for employees to celebrate and gather with loved ones. The City Manager and City Council desire for an additional half-day holiday to be observed on Friday, December 26, 2025, for City employees with full operations beginning at 1:00 PM Eastern Standard Time. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that an additional half-day, four hours, beginning at 1:00 PM Eastern Standard Time on December 26, 2025, is granted to employees of the city, subject to standard holiday procedures for the 2025 Christmas holidays. Pass the proof and adopt it the second day of December, 2025.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Council, we refer to resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask this Council for a motion, please.
Motion approved.
All right, motion, Councilmember Florence. Second, Councilmember, yes. Motion, and we have a second. Any comments or discussion? All right, Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Dave. Yes. Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Florence.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, Council on the Engineering and Public Works Department. We have a resolution in reference to authorize Alamo Power to install 153 watt LED streetlight, 5,001 to 8,500 lumens, type 2, grade 4,000 K, on pole number 6-137, 934, at intersection of Third Street South and Ninth Avenue South. Mrs. Davis.
Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the city will authorize Alamo Power to install the following streetlight and pay the monthly electric service to Alamo Power Company for the streetlight as follows. One, install 153 watt LED streetlight, 5,001 to 8,500 lumens, type 2, grade 4,000 K, on pole number 6-137, 934, at intersection of Third Street South and Ninth Avenue South. Pass the proof and adopt it the second day of December, 2025.
Okay, thank you again, Mrs. Davis, for the reading of the resolutions, Council. We have all heard. And at this time, Council, I'd like to ask the Council for a motion.
Motion approved.
A motion from Councilman Dave, and that's the second, Councilmember Florence. All right. We have a motion, and we have a second. Any comments or questions or discussion? All right, Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Dave.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Florence.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, Council on the Engineering Department. Is a resolution in reference to authorizing and directing the mayor and city manager to sign and enter into agreement with TerraCon to perform geotechnical engineering services for the installation of a metal building to store and organize electronics recycling in an amount not to exceed $8,000. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas the city was awarded the Alamo Recycling Fund in the amount of $150,000 from the Alamo Department of Environmental Management, AM, for the installation of a metal building to store and organize electronic recycling. And whereas the city is preparing bid documents for the installation of the electronics recycling building. And whereas the City of Phoenix City has solicited TerraCon to perform geotechnical engineering services, including subsurface exploration, testing, consultation, and reporting. And whereas TerraCon has provided an agreement to perform the geotechnical engineering services in an amount not to exceed $8,000. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize the mayor and city manager to enter into an agreement with TerraCon to perform geotechnical engineering services for the installation of a metal building to store and organize electronics recycling in an amount not to exceed $8,000. Pass the proof and adopt it the second day of December, 2025.
Okay, thank you.
Council, approve.
Resolution. This time, I'd like to ask the Council for a motion.
Motion approved.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Dave, may I have his second?
Second.
Second, from Councilmember Florence. Comments or discussion? Okay. Now, at this time, Council, I will call for a vote, Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Dave. Yes. Councilmember Green. Yes. Councilmember Florence.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, Information Technology Department. Council, we have a resolution in reference to directing the mayor and city manager to sign and enter into a renewal agreement with ESRI, Environmental Systems Research Institute Incorporated, for a three-year STEA, small government enterprise agreement for TIS software in an amount of $126,600. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, has been using geographic information system, GIS, software from Environmental Systems Research Institute, Inc., ESRI, since 2005 to produce maps and gather, manage, and analyze geographic information. And whereas the city has determined ESRI software continues to be the best suited product for the city's GIS needs. And whereas under Resolution Number 2022-260, the City Council approved a three-year ESRI, small government enterprise agreement, SGEA, providing enterprise-wide access to ESRI's core GIS platform and related tools. And that agreement will expire on December 6, 2025. And whereas the ESRI, small government enterprise agreement, SGEA, is intended for small county and municipal governments with a population of 150,000 that will provide unlimited access to ESRI's core software platform, online platform, uncapped quantities of analytical tools and extensions, as well as several value-added items. And whereas the city has determined that renewing the ESRI, small government enterprise agreement, is the most efficient and cost-effective method to maintain and expand GIS capabilities across multiple city departments, compared to purchasing new perpetual licenses and extensions on an individual basis. And whereas ESRI has submitted a proposal for a three-year small government enterprise agreement based on the city's population at a cost of $126,600 and billed in three annual installments of $42,200. And whereas the Director of Information Technology Department, in concurrence with Engineering and Public Works Departments, recommend that the city enter into a three-year small government enterprise agreement based on the city's population at a cost of $126,600 and billed in three annual installments of $42,200. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the mayor and city manager are hereby authorized and directed to execute, and the City Clerk is hereby authorized and directed to attend on behalf of the city and quadruplet, and quad, I'm sorry, quad, quadruplet, the small enterprise agreement county and municipality government, E214-2 agreement with ESRI for a term of three years and an amount not to exceed $42,200 for each year of the term and $126,600 in aggregate. A copy of said agreement is attached here to incorporate at year end and made in part here of by reference. Pass the proof and adopt it the second day of December, 2025.
All right, thank you. Get looks up sometime, though it ain't easy. It seems to be. However, thank you. Council, we refer to reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask this Council for a motion, please.
Motion approved.
We have a motion, Councilmember Green, and that's the second, Councilmember Florence. We have that, Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Motion, we have the second. Any comments or discussion?
I guess so, Mayor. Mr. Mike Lockey on for the citizens of Phoenix City, please. Mike, this program, and tell everybody so that you can read this this morning.
Good.
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
Good morning. This software is used all across the city. It's mainly used by engineering public works for computer-based mapping. They use it to keep up with street resurfacing. Police department uses it for crime analysis. Utility department, they use it for keeping up with water lines and water and sewer infrastructure.
Well, what I hear is you may report a court way in here.
It allows the city to keep up in all of those aspects.
That's great. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mike, good job. And other comments or discussion? If I call for a vote, Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Dave. Yes. Councilmember Green. Yes. Councilmember Florence. Yes. Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, Council on the Utilities Department. Is a resolution in reference to authorize and direct the mayor and city manager to accept quotes from their direct bio gas division of Olden Farm, O U F O, USA LLC for gas system equipment at the wastewater treatment plant in an amount not to exceed $18,130. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas the City of Phoenix City operates a wastewater treatment plant which has digesters to handle bio solids. And whereas said digesters have a gas system to collect and safely burn on excess methane. And whereas during the cleaning of said digesters, the digester gas system was inspected by wastewater treatment plant personnel. And whereas said inspection found some components which need replacement for proper operation of the digesters and gas system. And whereas their bio gas and division of Olden Farm, USA LLC, submitted quotes to provide the gas system equipment which needs to be replaced in an amount not to exceed $18,130. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize and direct the mayor and city manager to accept the quotes from their bio gas and division of Olden Farm, USA LLC for gas system equipment at the wastewater treatment plant in an amount not to exceed $18,130. Pass the proof and adopt it the second day of December, 2025.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Council, we refer to resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask the Council for a motion, please.
Motion approved.
A motion from Councilman Dave, and that's the second, Councilmember Florence.
Yes.
We have that, Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
We do have a motion, and the second, Council, any comments or discussion? Okay, if not, at this time, I'd like to call for a vote, Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Dave.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Florence.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, Council on the order this. But before I begin to this, at that time, I would call on the clerk to read the letter of recommendation. However, the reason why we are doing it now is that we did not read it at the last council meeting due to the fact that the planning commission did not need prior to that meeting. So I am asking the clerk to read the letter of recommendation from the planning commission. So with that, Mrs. Davis.
The letter of recommendation from the planning commission reads as follows. Rezone, rezone 2.44 plus minor acres, 4435 Lee Road to 48, Jackson Dyer, owner. The planning commission of the City of Phoenix City met on Wednesday, November 12, 2025, to consider the request of Jackson Dyer, owner, to annex and rezone 2.44 plus minor acres located at 4435 Lee Road to 48 as an R1 zone, low-density road maintenance district. This request is prior to the approval of the annexation as followed by Act 2009-629 of the Alabama State Legislature. It is the recommendation of the planning commission that this request to annex and rezone be approved by the City Council. Sincerely, Billy Sims, Chairman of the Phoenix City Planning Commission, and Elijah Phil Dwight, Secretary of the Phoenix City Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. We refer to reading of the recommendation from the planning commission. And again, I do want to state that the reason why we read it at this reading was due to the last reading. It was not, the planning commission did not need prior to our council meeting. So again, that's our reason for having this letter read. So with that being said, at this time, I'd like to call for a public hearing. And if there's anyone that would love to come and address the Council in reference to this annexation, now is the time to do so. Okay. Since no one has stepped forward, I am closing this public hearing. So with that being said, I would like to ask this Council for a motion.
Motion approved.
All right, motion, Councilmember Green, and the second, Councilman Dave. Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Dave.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Florence.
Yes.
Councilmember.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, Council on the license application. This is a second reading. However, I would not ask the clerk to reread this application due to the fact that it was read at our last meeting. So with that, this is a second reading. It's an application for an on-premise beer license, on-premise wine license, on-premise whiskey and wine license submitted by TS Food and Management, LFC, going business as Channel Garden, located at 2025 Highway 2-Dade, 5-Pax, Phoenix City, Alabama. Again, this is a second reading, so I'm not going to ask the clerk to reread. So with that being stated, I will now, at this time, like to ask this Council for a motion, please.
Motion approved.
All right, motion, Councilman Davis, and then Councilmember Florence. Comments or discussion? All right, Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Dave.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Florence.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Council, so very much. We appreciate everything that you all do individually, as well as collectively. And so with that.
I was prepared to ask this question yesterday, it was on my mind, but I can ask this question to the building department.
Sure.
Okay, but I want to know, could you update us on the directory? I was only able to get him ready for a couple of years.
I think if you would, I would prepare for that. We've been to your thing. Okay.
So we good, Mrs. Davis?
Yes, so we good.
Thank you. With that, Mr. Boyd.
Yeah, I just paid it by.
So with that said, it's the same way, anything you want to say, our business.
Councilmember Dave. Happy birthday, Councilmember Dave. Such a fine gentleman. But on a serial, and in addition, such a fine gentleman. He is a very committed member to our community. To reach eighty, a hundred today, or eighty, what? I think it says eighty, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But for him to reach that milestone, it's God has been good to him. He'll tell you that. Is that right, Mr. Davis?
Yes, ma'am.
Congratulations to those employees that have committed to serve their community. Four people, forty years, awesome. And so we just say thank you for your commitment and the great job that you all continue to do. And to our citizens out there, continue doing what is right. We just want to, if I don't have the opportunity again, I wanted to say have a happy holiday season. And we just going to continue to pray and ask God to have favor over every member in our community. And to this council, thank you. It's always a privilege and an honor to be serving with committed members of our council and the mayor. So we ask God to continue to show us favor as we reach this holiday season. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Mrs. Florence.
I would just add to my sincere happy birthday wishes to such a noble man who is giving us four score and more. So happy birthday, Mr. Davis.
Thank you.
So you don't need to say that it's your birthday, so that's okay. Can I go ahead and, before I ask the City Manager? Can I go ahead and, before I ask the city manager, before I close this out?
Yes, sir.
You enjoy this day, so don't waste your energy on talking. Mr. Hunt.
That's what he do for this.
I would like to say this, though, on serious note. Last night, I go down and watched it here, it looked fantastic. I like to say it's a toy, they, your crew did a fantastic job out there. Looks real nice, real good, I liked it. That's all I got this afternoon.
All right. You shoot?
Yes, sir.
Positively, shoot?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Hunt.
Okay, like I said, this is another year just by past, we got one more meeting before this year is out. So I want to thank everybody for what they've done this past year. Thank them early, because I know we had the last meeting and signed things and transpired. And thank all the department heads, everybody that's worked with us, the clerks, the office, they do a tremendous amount of work, the attorneys, everyone, B.T.V., and the whole works, make sure I haven't gotten anybody, especially this council. And what we've done, we have a tremendous year, we headed into another one. At the next meeting, and we're not gonna state the secret around here, next meeting, we will be appointing a new police chief, which is Chief George White.
All right.
And following that meeting, we will have a reception at Todd's place up at the, I always call it Todd's place up at the, I don't know where it's in. Up there. And congratulate him, his family, on moving to another plateau in their life, you know.
All right.
So want everybody to know he's done a tremendous job, you know, that went for a long term on yesterday. So I want to not only introduce him to the public, but to his department also. New direction that they are going in, everybody got to follow what their path is. And he got aspirations and different dreams to accomplish in front of his department. So we want to make sure we put that in place. And like I said, I want to say that happy birthday, you just, it's a day, just again, because I really, like I said, I really enjoyed, you know, a whole lot. So, you know.
You can't give her no gratitude, you can't, you really.
Really, you can go toe-toe. And all of us, I want to make sure, you know, I know the people, the family, the man that said, hey, good birthday. It's been a tough year for all of us, you know, and I always have to get to this point, you know, that no matter what time of year, it's always a big problem, you know, to have to deal with any loss. And having people that's going without people, come out here to celebrate. We have a growing homeless community that's amongst us, you know, whether it's in Columbus or in Phoenix City. So it's a lot of things that have to address and try to be happy and keep yourself sane and try to do things. A lot of people want things. So all I say is totally, all of us pray for one another, you know, for peace and understanding of how God can have those structures to move through His word. And that's it. And like I say, people know how I look, it's for people in this city, you know, man. I heard young men say, thank God for letting them live out his dream, you know. You know, and that always touches me because I have done that. And Phoenix City has allowed me to do that. And with a lot of you all, I love and care about you all tremendously, you know, and I do everything that I can within my power that God allows me to do. And I wish a lot more people would think about them than people that we pass through, pass by every day. So you are enjoying, I'm telling you early, enjoy the holidays because we know the changes we go through day by day, year. It adjusts, we make a tremendous amount of change throughout the day, we make adjustments. So to make it through this, so thank you all, thank you, Mr. Davis.
Well, Mayor, look, I just sit here, you think you have blessed, I've been in town, there's, I mean, God's always going on my long way. And if I ain't, I may have to do everything for myself, ride, take my mask, do everything, and that's a blessing for them itself. As I said, in the Chinese, you know, here blessed all of us. And Mayor, when I go to these families, when I'm at a question, young and I, and God knows, you're here, that's a blessing, that is a blessing. And, you know, I always say this, nobody know what the future hold for any of us, any of us. And each day we live, we should try to help somebody, bless somebody, you know. And I say this all the time in church, this is what I say, it is not everything so quick and so right that God, God won't give you more days, long. Praise His name, worship His name, that's why, that's why we're still here. I'm sorry, that's it, that's it, Mr. Davis.
But thank you, Mrs. Davis, again, I want, yes, sir.
May I ask for my, my, this is about a positive Christmas prayer. I know, well, not looking to be promising, but like, feel everybody, it's a, it's a right amount, man. It's a long, long time, a hundred light years, and it's, well, we're, well, parade, Saturday, so bring your envelope, come out and go to the parade.
Thank you, Tom, appreciate, I know it's a lot of work, but thank you all for giving together. Mrs. Day, happy birthday, eight years old. You do know you're over twenty-nine thousand days old, don't you? That's a lot, that's a lot of that, so let's, happy birthday to you all. And again, I just, I just can't thank this council and department and the people that work for this community and even the people in this community. And I always say the two most powerful words you can say when it's done sincerely is to say thank you. And when you say that, you should not even be looking for something in return. But thank you all for what you do. It's not an easy task, it's not an easy gig, as I've stated before. And, but we do have the responsibility to give of ourselves because I've said this several times. The quickest way for any of us to get ahead is to build the people around us, and that's our responsibility. Life is just not about us individually, it's enough for all of us, but we do need to build each other up and continue to do those things. But it's a miracle because again, we have the responsibility to do that. So with that being said, thank you all so much, thank you, citizen, and we certainly thank C.T.B. Bean for making this our community. And may God continue to bless all of us individually as well as collectively, and continue to bless Phoenix City. Thank you all so much, and at this time, would you stand in general? Thank you.